Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Absent.
Mrs. Miller?
Here. Let's stand for the flag of allegiance.
... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Fisher, would you like to do the student and program recognition?
I would. I am going to call up Ms. Fisher, who is our Grigsby Student Council representative, and she has a surprise and some information for you as this is board member appreciation. So, Ms. Fisher? You may.
Student Council made you guys little goodie bags and cards and colored pages, just something small for school board appreciation month, so I hope you like it. There's a little pencil that says "Griggsby Student Council." Thank you very much. Yep.
Don't walk away. Don't walk away. Why don't you, if you guys will, make sure to stay in for everyone. All right, look over here. Look out here. Small. I think they want their pictures well, but you guys go ahead. But make them stay as long as we can. And obviously, real quick, since this is board member appreciation, I, as Speaker of Mrs. Bassler, as well, want to thank you guys for all you do for us here at Carlisle. I want to have a certificate for you as well, so, Mr. Jewell, who is our longest tenured board member. So at this time, if you want to stay and listen to the rest of the movie, it's out of the way. If you want to stay for the rest of the evening, you may, but not if you guys get out as well. Thank you. That is everything for number three.
Would you like to do the administrative first one as well?
Yes. Obviously, everybody should have a copy of the RIC report I sent out to you this afternoon. And then you also have copies, probably, as you should, for the four building principal reports. And then we are going to do something a little bit different this month. I have each of the building grade levels, so Mr. Miller and Ms. Dearwester are going to kind of give an update, pre-K through six, what they're doing in regards to curriculum and what we've been up to over the past several months. And then Mr. Huber and Mr. Turner do seven twelve. So we'll start with Mr. Miller and Ms. Dearwester for pre-K through six.
Good evening. So, this is for the entire elementary. I lost the point flip, and so I'm reporting, so for both Ms. Dearwester and me, we just wanted to give you guys just some highlights of major curriculum updates and other things that we're trying to do at the elementary, trying to implement and help student achievement at this point. This obviously is not an extensive report of everything that we got going on, just wanted to bring you out to speak on a couple of things. First thing I want to talk about is, we are, this year, year one, implementing a new ELA English Language Arts curriculum. It's called My View. It is a structured literacy program based on the science of reading. I'm going to take just a quick second. Science reading is a big push right now in the state, not just our state, but all over. It really just refers to kind of all the reading research that's been compiled and kind of using that to kind of guide instruction and curriculum and so forth to the best that we possibly can about how students learn to read. About a year ago, at this time, the state of Ohio, Governor DeWine saying, Department of Education, of course, you have to do this, they created a list of core curriculum that were acceptable for schools to use, even if you were in the process of choosing at that point. We chose My View, which we're in year one implementing right now. And, you know, just, obviously, with anything in year one, we're learning kind of what's working best and what's not in terms of the materials, but it is off the approved list, and we are, you know, hopeful and looking forward to that, showing some returns, not only this year, but in future years as well. So that's one major component of what we have going on. I want to talk a little bit about intervention for our students. Obviously, there's tons of different interventions that we're using in a pre-K to sixth grade setting. I want to specify one that we're kind of emphasizing this year, but before I do that, I want to really kind of thank our district administration and our technology department because over the past couple of years, we've gotten to the point on the elementary side to where we have enough Chromebooks now to where most students have access to a Chromebook at least several days a week, and most really have Chromebook access every day. We kind of moved and started at six and moved our way down, and we're to the point now where even in second and first grade, most students have access most days or all the time in many cases. I want to talk about a program we're kind of emphasizing this year because we have access to the Chromebooks, we're using a program, we've been using it before, called Admentum. We're able to stretch it down lower now. Admentum is an online program that creates an individualized learning path for students in either ELA reading or math, and we are using that as one of several interventions that students have the ability and teachers have the ability to use with students. Some of the things we like with that are, one, students are working on a device, which they're going to be asked to do on their state tests, starting in third grade and above, so they're getting that experience even at younger grade levels. We also like the fact that it creates a, once the students take a benchmark assessment, it creates an individualized learning path for them, and so they're getting the differentiated, partially getting the differentiated instruction through that program that they need. And, much like I talked about, the approved list of core curriculums that the governor and the department put out, there's also a core, there's a list of intervention programs of which Admentum is on there as well. So, we're emphasizing that as one of the interventions in our toolboxes to really help kids get what they need on an individualized basis. As you would expect, Ms. Dearwester and I are in classrooms lots, daily, weekly, we're in classrooms all the time, observing teachers either formally, informally, or as part of walkthrough, and we talked and just kind of wanted to share some of what we're kind of, we're consistently seeing. We're seeing students have the opportunity to work in pairs or small groups and communicate with each other, which is great. Seeing teachers focusing on the "I do, we do, you do" method of structured teaching. Students have the opportunity to ask questions and then receiving feedback from the teacher or other adults, or sometimes other kids in the classroom to help with their learning. Students being assessed on what they have learned. And then we typically will meet with teachers after a formal or an off-cycle observation meet with the teacher, and even on a walkthrough, there's a checklist, and we're giving the teachers copies of that in terms of, so they have feedback as to what we're pursuing with. And finally, Mr. Fisher has been working with the Montgomery County ESC to help provide some curricular support for the district here. You know, Ms. Dearwester and I are talking from our end, some of the things that we really feel can benefit us from some of that support. One, it's just, as I alluded to earlier, the implementation of all the different literacy initiatives that are going on right now in the state. I alluded to science of reading earlier. I meant to say this earlier, by the way, when I was talking about My View. Every teacher, not just in our district, but through the state, is taking training on science of reading. I think, I think the deadline's this June, everyone's supposed to be finished, just about everybody that I'm aware of right now, our district's already taking that training. So the combination of the training and the materials, we hope to really get that push going with the science of reading. But RIMS are another thing, I know, the reading improvement monitoring plans used to be something that only applied in kindergarten to fifth grade. Last year, they started applying to fourth grade, this year to fifth grade, move to sixth grade next year. So basically, kids who are on reading improvement and monitoring plans can only come off when they meet the necessary score on the state reading test. So, you know, in terms of writing those plans, in terms of helping find the best interventions to help kids make the most improvement possible to reach that score is another area that the curriculum support can really help in. And really, lastly, just the ability to have conversations with someone who isn't in our district every day and can tell us, hey, here's what's, what other districts are, similar districts to us, whether locally or throughout the state, are implementing or doing to help student achievement, you know, is another area we really think can help with that. So again, this has not been an exhaustive list of things that we're doing in the elementary. I just kind of wanted to hit a couple of major points and bring you guys up to speed with some things that we are working on on that side to really help our students. All right?
Any questions?
All right. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move now to secondary. It looks like both, Mr. Turner and Mr. Miller.
I wish I knew we had a chance to flip for this, but I'm ready. I would have won somehow. Heads up, win till see lose. Yeah, well, thank you for having us tonight. We looked at data from the previous three years at the junior high school, seventh and eighth grade. So our value added, our teachers, five of six of them exceeded one year's growth or meant the one year's growth, so that's five. So with their value added rating, we're pretty proud of that, and I want to thank the teachers for all the hard work. Looking at, Mr. Fisher, this year, come in, he says, "I need some action plan, I need something for you guys, I need some goal, what are we going to do to raise test scores?" And anyway, so I took, I have about five things that I feel like is our action plan as a staff. We met together as BLT at the beginning of the year, kind of sit down and said, okay, so let's look at some data and what it's telling us. And the first thing that really was eye popping, one of the main things, was our gifted services. And it's, it's not that it's being taught bad, but I think we kind of have spread it out. We have two teachers teaching advanced language arts, and sometimes, I think we kind of felt like if we had the one teacher who is our gifted coordinator, who would then teach seventh and eighth grade. So that kind of, that's one of our action plans this year, is providing them for more professional development for both of our gifted coordinators in elementary and in secondary, but also just giving them both professional development when they need it. And they're going to these conferences and stuff, and bringing back the stuff for us, and our teachers do use also. We're thinking about restructuring our special ed department. So then we have two great special ed or intervention specialists, and we're really thinking about possibly expanding our, basically our prime times, making it shorter, where they can provide more instruction during their goal time, but also during an intervention time, where they can take those kids and provide extra intervention. We're also thinking about restructuring our schedule. One of our goals this year was to start on a schedule that provided us departmental team time, and basically, not necessarily a team atmosphere, but we will have grade levels where they can, they can have common plans together, and that's one thing, Ms. Fisher, has worked with all of us, and I think it's a goal for all of us, is to provide grade level or subject level planned time. So that's, Ms. Jackson and I have already started and almost completed, that seventh grade is completed already. Lowering prime time numbers. Sometimes what happens when we get on our prime times on Monday and Tuesday and Thursday and Friday, classes get overwhelmed for the kids that, I'm not going to say doesn't need intervention, but when we really kind of concentrate on our kids that are getting the intense intervention, that sometimes that kind of puts more kids in the classroom. This way, we can divide up prime times and maybe keep it at a lower rate, but then we can also get teachers to provide more intervention during that time. And then last, or, no, one other thing, we've really looked at our chronic absenteeism. We've met with, we've met with different people through, with students and parents and counseling resource people, and we even met with Judge Jill Kirby from Long County, just to tackle some of our chronic absenteeism, which I think that's a, that plays a part in our, in our test scores also. We have a 20% chronic absentee rate at the junior high, and I think we've done a great job of hitting that off before it gets to be a problem this year. And last but not least, and it's fresh off the process, our Admentum data, as Mr. Miller explained what Admentum was, we've had Mr. Steckel explain, come in and talk to you before, but really, this is kind of today, we got our final, our second diagnostic, which gave us so much data, that something to provide for you guys is our seventh graders in math, they've grown 85%, and reading, they've grown 81%. Now, this is from one diagnostic, diagnosis to the other, and then in language arts, they've grown 77%. Our eighth graders have grown from first to second diagnostic 95%, reading 87%, and language arts, 87%. So that, that means kids are growing from one year to the next, or from the beginning of the year to now. So if we can provide that, I think we can really provide, just test scores will do nothing but come up at this point in time. So, that's all I have. Any questions you, that you would have them read? I'm going to go to the junior high girls' basketball game when Mr. Fisher releases these. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just like Mr. Fisher said, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight. There are two kind of topics that I want to address. One is the state report card, which is obviously results. You take the test once a year, there's a results. The other thing I kind of look at is our ILT, which is the process. So, as a district, we've taken a lot of time, whether it's the state report card, trying to identify some of the strengths and weaknesses. And everybody can sit up here and point out a lot of our strengths, but when you start looking at improvement, you obviously want to start looking at, okay, what are some of those areas of weakness that we need to improve upon? So at the secondary level, more so at the high school, similar to Mr. Turner, attendance is an issue at the high school. Now, that does not mean that we have mass amounts of absenteeism rates, but if you're not at school, it's very difficult to learn. So when a student is absent, we try to dig deep, okay, why are you missing school? Everybody getting sick? Not a problem. But when you start looking at the students who are missing a lot, then we want to sit down and have a conversation as to why are you missing school, and what can we do to help out? If students could be out for a long period of time, we said a student was out this last week, had surgery, was out for the entire week, well, through email, through classroom, we would kind of pick up some of that missing work, and obviously, you're talking about it right there. Another component on the report card besides attendance is our progress or value added. We have a lot of positive areas to point out. The two that we are definitely focusing on to try to improve would be our biology and our offensive scores, multiple times throughout the course of the year, we've already sat down, had conversations with the teachers, where's the problem, what can we do as a total team to help the process out? As an example, biology said, well, what would really help us is if we can have other classes looking at charts, graphs, and diagrams. That's a weakness of our students right now, along with the vocabulary terms. When you look at the tier three vocabulary in biology and the course assessment, it's very rich, it's extremely high. Algebra, on the other hand, something that we can work upon, 684 is the mark needed to pass or show competency on the state test. 700 is proficient. So, we have put a lot of time, a lot of focus on, let's make sure there's students to that 684 mark, but really, it's 700, that's the proficiency mark. So working with our teachers to make sure that we are not just getting to that 684, we're stretching up to 700, and even pushing farther to get those students to advance and accomplish. When I look at, when we look at our secondary team, we start looking at our ILT work, a couple of things that we've done, and I'm very proud of, we've conducted a survey recently to try to figure out from our staff, what do we need to work on, what can we improve upon? And hearing the feedback from the teachers, we're working with the ESC to then create a plan, not just for this full year, but moving forward to the future, what's a focused plan for professional development. Through our ILT as well, just that continued conversation of trying to support and enforce teachers, and another piece that we're looking at is through the entire secondary, but really the entire district, how do we get our students to be workforce ready? As an example, one of the things we've done at the high school is focused on a monthly soft skill. So some of the soft skills that we've introduced so far, work ethic, time management, and adaptability, and every month that we continue to roll out more, but just really trying to make sure that it's not just about having the knowledge, but also having the ability to perform the task, and as most people know, those soft skills are extremely important. Any questions? Thank you.
So I'll just, very, very quickly, because I know, looking, we've got some other things to go, but just to touch base on a couple of the important keys, the big thing with the scheduling, again, it's making sure that we have that common plan time. We've not really had the opportunity to do anything with the curriculum service prior to, at least not to my knowledge, Long County unfortunately does not have the curriculum department that we've had through Montgomery County and the connection we've had. And I do know the person that we're using is Molly Stam, who is a former Carlisle teacher, so she understands what we're doing, but I know the common plan time has been a big discussion for us because it is important. We have to find time for our teachers to talk during the course of the day and not just on PD days, so having that common plan time is going to do that. And as Andrew alluded to with the survey, that is a big piece of information that we are looking and digging into. We just finished the results about two weeks ago, if I remember right, but we have, a lot of information came back from that, and it's trying to just dissect what's on there, what we're seeing, and really, taking some of the outliers out, what the trends are, and that's going to be the big pieces we move forward because using that, Mike had mentioned something about intervention, you know, just because a child is struggling academically doesn't necessarily mean they need to be labeled, we just need to figure out what we're doing in a class to help that student better understand. Again, it doesn't mean we have to put a label on it, but I think that's what a lot of people associate with students who struggle, is we need to label them, and that's not the case. We just need to look at what we're doing in the classroom to truly make sure that we're reaching all kids at the same time, and I think that's something that through the survey, we're going to be able to dig into. So, any questions on any of that that the principals presented tonight? Okay, Mr. Turner, you can hit your name. All right, so that's everything for number four.
Are there any pins or comments today? Mr. Bassler, would you please do the charter for court?
Sure. My first item is my audit update, and my audit update is I have no update. I was anticipating, hopefully, to be done with the audit by this point, but I have not heard much in the last three weeks or so from the state auditors, and I find it bad luck for me to be the one to initiate the contact, so I don't have any update for the audit right now. What I do know is everything is going well, and there's been no surprises, and all looks good up to this point. I'm hoping that I get contact soon, and we'll be going through the wrap-up process, and you will receive an email that you know that it's complete, and fingers crossed, all is well. Action items for the month. I need approval for the minutes from the December regular board meeting, as well as the January ninth organizational board meeting.
First by Mr. Jewell, second by Ms. Milligan, both call.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Next is the financial report, which is part of your packet. I think you guys are all up to speed, on where we are financially, with some of the outliers that we had, including our buses. Unfortunately, happened to purchase two buses over the last couple of months. We also had some bus incidents over the last couple of months, but all is well, things are progressing. Finish out the calendar year, December 31st. You should have received your W-2s, all employees received their W-2s last week, so we're moving along.
Do we have a motion? First by Ms. McIntosh, second by Mr. Jewell, both call.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
And then last thing, I need approval for a donation for $500 to the Nevious Kids of All Fund from Jim Chris.
Do we have a motion? First by Ms. Milligan, second by Ms. McIntosh, both call.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
And Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Thank you very much, that's my report for the month.
So just three items to report on, and then I'll do the discipline information several.
First of all, congratulations to our high school competition cheer team, who yesterday competed at the best in state in Columbus at Hillier Darby High School. They took third overall in the state, so congratulations to our ladies who do a great job. They will be heading to nationals next week, I believe, or week after next, to down in Disney World, so we've got that to come up. Recently, one of the things that we also have sent out some updates on for parents, went out officially this afternoon, one within the Tribe News, but just our progress book update and some new expectations that we had put in place in regards to what the expectations are for staff with grades. I also sent it out via file forms today, just that information as well, so that should be going out, and hopefully that'll help eliminate any questions or concerns. I know we did put in there that if there are still progress, there was a list of people who would contact. I do know I've also made sure with our building administrators what their expectations are with progress book as well, so hopefully we'll be able to eliminate any additional issues with that. Not to say that an occasional thing will not come up because of projects, but, you know, making sure we communicate as a building is important as well. Just one quick update with our SRO. I did speak with, via text, with Chief Rogers last week, late last week. The deadline for the SRO position is this Friday. I do believe that we are up to date. One of the things that we had to deal with, the city had to deal with, was filling. They had two positions essentially that they needed to replace. It is my understanding that both of those have been filled, and now we're just waiting on applications. We do have one that has applied for sure with the, for the SRO position, so that deadline gives us Friday, so I do plan on reaching out to Chief Rogers next week to get the latest. Do you remember when I originally talked about this, the soonest he said we would have anything filled would be the February 3rd or 4th, whatever that Monday is? So, we're on track for that. It doesn't necessarily mean we'll have somebody in, but it'll be coming shortly, so. Those are all the updates I have. Discipline information that you have, as we are required each semester to give a discipline update, and then we'll post that on our website, so all of you have a hard copy of that information. And then we also will be posting that on the website after the board meeting is over. Basically, the document you have just simply lists key discipline violations, truancy, biting, et cetera, and you can see the total number of disciplines since that we've had, K through 12 is 151, and also breaks down the in-school suspension and some of them by type. Any questions on any of that information? And again, that'll appear on our website. We're in the process right now, thanks to Quinn, and we've actually gone through and I've done some redesign on our website to try to make it a little easier to find some things. It may, it's still going to take a little bit of time to work through that, just because we needed to do some heavier reconstruction, but hopefully, information such as the discipline report will be easier to access for community and personnel. And then moving on to action items, the first three, underneath general district business would be the approval of our first reading of the policies that I sent out to you. Again, all the policies, and importantly, we just received an email today from Neola, because of all the legislative changes and all the things going on with the executive orders that are out there, we're going to be anticipating a ton of changes coming towards us. So these are all, it's all existing policies, nothing more than just changing, pointing directions of where they go, and then just cleaning up some of the language to get back to, to follow the regulations. So we'll do the second reading of that in next month and then approve. Letter B is approval of the 25, 26, and 26, 27 school calendars, which we had the hearing on last, earlier, as I should say. Once those are approved, we'll get those out to community members. They'll be on the website tomorrow, and then we'll have them out in the update to our parent, parents, starting next Monday. And then letter C, again, due to regulations, we are now going to be required each year to pass a resolution that states that myself is the superintendent, and Emily is our special ed director, that we will make sure that all of our policies and practices are up to date and model policies based on the ODE. It's a lot to formally pass a resolution each year, so that's what letter C is. Questions? Okay. Just need a motion.
Do we have a question? First by Ms. Milligan, second by Mr. Jewell, both call.
Mrs. Milligan?
Yes.
Mr. Jewell?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Morris?
Yes.
Letter C, or letter, number two, excuse me, number two is to approve a new four-hour custodial position retroactive back to January 6th, and then to approve a educational aid custodial second.
Do we have a question?
that we will make sure that all of our policies and practices are up to date and model policies based on the ODE. And so I'll formally pass a resolution each year, so that's what letter C is in this time. Questions? Just need a motion.
Mrs. Milligan? Mr. Jewel? Mrs. McIntosh? Mrs. Morris?
Letter C, or letter, number two, excuse me, number two, is to approve a new four-hour custodial position retroactive back to January 6th, and then to approve a educational aid custodial.
Mrs. Milligan? Mrs. McIntosh? Mrs. Morris? Mr. Jewel?
Number three is supplemental resignations for personal reasons and/or to take different positions, other coaching positions.
Mrs. McIntosh? Mrs. Milligan? Mr. Jewel? Mrs. Morris?
And number four is supplemental employment to including our new varsity volleyball coach, which we are elementary school director of student services, and then others listed as well. Lot of volunteers for our band as they are in the winter season as well, so.
Mrs. McIntosh? Mrs. Milligan? Mrs. Morris? Mr. Jewel?
Unless there are any questions, that is my report.
I'm not right now with the holiday season. We don't, but I'm anticipating quite a few in the coming months.
Kelly, is anything new with CCC?
We had our regular board meeting on the 14th of January at 7:00. It was just a regular board meeting.
Is there any bulk business? Like, did you hear? First by Mr. Jewel, second by Ms. Milligan, go call.
Mr. Jewel? Mrs. Milligan? Mrs. McIntosh? Mrs. Morris? Time on the air with 6:32.